Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the council briefing session for today. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Mumm.
Here.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. And Mr. Ormsby, if you'd like to brief our May 3 legislative, or city council meetings, agendas, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Council President and members of the council. And the administrative session for next week on the consent agenda, the first item is a recommendation to purchase a backhoe, and David Payne from Fleet is here to brief this.
Good afternoon, Council President, council members. This is a request for the Water Department to purchase a cat backhoe from Western State's CAT in Spokane, Washington, using Sourcewell contract 032119-CAT. The total purchase price is $136,632.36. This will be a replacement for another vehicle of similar size and shape that has met its end-of-life usefulness. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next, we have two items that Thea Prince will brief us on. One is a value blanket, and the other is garage door and electric gate maintenance. So, Thea, you're on.
Good afternoon, Council President and council members. The first item that I have is asking for approval to enter into a value blanket order with fascinol that will be used by multiple departments. At this time, we have four different value blankets for different city departments for an inventory management system, which includes vending machines and the products that go into those vending machines. So what I would like to do, these are all getting ready to expire, is I would like to access a Sourcewell, I think it's, no, it's National IPA contract, and create one master value blanket that all of the departments will use. Any questions? Okay. The second item I have is a renewal for our overhead door maintenance contract with overhead door nation serve, and this is the final renewal. This was bid, bid, back in 2018, I believe, and we had the original two-year contract or three-year contract with two renewals, and this is our second renewal. This is a master contract that's used by multiple city departments as well. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Thea. The next item on the agenda is a proposed interlocal agreement between the city of Spokane and the city of Newport for hearing examiner services, and I don't see Brian McGinn on the call. I actually did talk with him about this today, so I can brief it. As you all know, there are a number of public entities who either don't have a hearing examiner or use our hearing examiner in the case of a conflict, and we also use the county's hearing examiner in the case of a conflict. The city of Newport has reached out and asked Brian if he had capacity to provide the service, and he does. And this is a contract not to exceed, so we won't necessarily get $3,000 in revenue for Brian's services, but we potentially could get up to that in this next year. And Brian says he does have the capacity to perform the work. Any questions? Okay. Next, and I think Mike McNabb is probably on the call to brief this, but it's a proposed amendment to the MOU between the city and the county, and it relates to the behavioral unit grant funding. And Mike, I think you're taking Justin's place on this.
I am. Good afternoon, council. So this was an amendment to the original 2019 WASPIC grant that we were a subrecipient of through the Spokane County Sheriff's Office. The city accepted an additional $72,230, and that was briefed to council. From what I was told, that was briefed to council previously. However, the county officials just now got the agreement ratified within their government process, and now we're bringing it back to you for its final approval. This funding is partially used for the TESPOS that we purchased recently this year.
Thank you, Mike. Next, we have a contract amendment relating to the shared mobility bike share with Lime, and Colin Quinnhurst is here to brief this item.
Yeah. Good afternoon, council members. Colin Quinnhurst in Planning Services. I'm here with a proposed amendment and extension of the wheel share contract. This was previously reviewed at Urban Experience Committee on April 12 and be at a study session March 25. And so with the original contract term of two years expiring this spring, we are proposing to exercise one of the optional two-year extensions that are in the contract currently. There's two optional two-year extensions in the contract, and so that would start this spring and extend for two more seasons. But with that, we are proposing a few amendments to the contract, and these are primarily focused on enforcement, as we discussed before. It would allow the city and Lime to do additional enforcement activities, and then with that, we are also doing additional education activities, so more signs, stencils, and then in-app notifications by Lime. There's one starting today, this afternoon, and it will go through the summer focused on sidewalk safety downtown, and so that's launching this season. And so that's the overview of what we're proposing, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Colin.
Well, Councilmember Kinnear has a question.
Next, we have a proposed.
Councilmember Kinnear has a question.
I'm trying to pet the dog and talk at the same time. It's not working. Colin, thank you for that, and as you know, I've been that thorn in your side. Can we have some more safety around Lime scooters? And so I'm glad to hear this. I think there are going to be a few people in my district that will be very happy about that, and certainly some of the downtown folks as well, so thank you for that. Are you going to be bringing forward those specifically to us then, or are we going to get another? We've talked about it, but are we going to get more specific, or is this what there is?
This is the chance today, and I can be more specific today, if that would be helpful. I can.
Or we can just talk offline would be great.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Stratton.
Quick question, Colin. You were good enough to put some stencils up in the Garland business district on the sidewalks. When we talk about more education and more enforcement, are we looking at more stencils? And if we are, could those be bigger or stand out more than what we have had?
Yeah, those are an option. We're looking at ways to make that more systematic. The first round was me out there with the stencil and spray paint, so I think we want to set up a contract and come up with more of a system. But yeah, we can redesign those and make them fit what we need.
And you did a great job on the stencils, and we're grateful. But whenever I'm up there, I notice that they're just hard to see, so thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah. Thanks for the comment.
Colin, my wife asked me yesterday what I was reading so intently, and I said, only a city council member would be reading an article in The New Yorker about the latest state of electric scooter mobility in New York City. And I don't know if you've read that article, but it sounds like there's some machine learning and GPS work that can keep them off sidewalks, not with Lime yet, but just wanted to make sure you read that, saw that.
Yeah, yeah. If they can do it in New York, they can do it anywhere, but Lime has demonstrated some capabilities that we're interested in pursuing, so yeah.
Great.
That's where it's headed.
Great. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah. Do we still, or are we currently prohibiting the use of Lime in Riverfront Park?
It was a complete no-ride zone up until recently, and what we did was we made a pavilion, a complete no-ride zone. You can't, the motor shuts down when you get near the pavilion, and you can't park in there. It's still a low-speed zone, so currently the ice river and the pavilion are no-ride zones. The rest of the park is a low-speed zone at five miles per hour. And then, you know, just today, we were talking about making every part of the park of the Orange Bridge a no-parking zone, just because we've seen, you know, scooters that get parked on bridges tend to end up in the river, so we'd like to avoid that.
Right. So I know, just my own experience, last year, basically got stuck because I was able to ride through the park, but once I got to the pavilion, which is where I was trying to get to, there was no place to park the bike. And so basically, I'm stuck paying an endless fee to enjoy the pavilion with no place to park the bike. And so hopefully, some of those bugs are being worked out, and we can make sure that folks can enjoy the bikes, enjoy the park, and get where they're going, and have a place to put those bikes.
Yeah, that's a really helpful comment. Yeah, we're trying to really tailor that pavilion no-ride zone to be just around the borders of it, so yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
All right. Your popular guy, Colin.
Any other questions? Okay, the next item on the proposed agenda is a contract amendment for additional costs associated with the Regal Cleveland Grace Water and Sewer Replacement Project, and Kevin Pacanco is here to present this item.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you. This contract amendment is related to the ongoing North Spokane Corridor Freeway Construction work and our utility relocation work required as a result of the NSC. Specifically, this amendment is for Wilson &amp; Company for additional costs related to inspection services they are performing on behalf of the NSF, and this is specifically related to our Regal Cleveland Grace Water and Sewer Replacement Project. The contract amendment is for $10,600, bringing the total contract amount to $149,260. Any questions?
Not seeing any. I'll move to the next item, and this is also a proposed contract amendment with KNL Gates for work that has been discussed at previous committee and council meetings relative to energy production and sales, and it's an increase in the contract of $55,000, and it's recommended for approval next week. Any questions? Okay. Next, we have two low-bid awards, and Dan Bowler from Engineering Services is here to present those. I hope. Well, let me work on reaching out to him, and if it's okay with the council, we can move on to the next items. The next two are the typical placeholders for these meetings. One is the report of the mayor on pending claims and payments, and the other is a placeholder for city council minutes to be approved. Next is the legislative agenda, and there are several special budget ordinances. The first involves both the general fund and the park cumulative reserve fund, and Paul and Josie from the Budget Office is here to present that.
Thank you, Mike, and good afternoon, Council President and council members. The first special budget ordinance is for $898,000, come from the general fund contingency reserve account, to be transferred to the Parks Department for windstorm repair costs. They had damage to some of their parks, golf courses, buildings, historic features, and this would allow them to get started on the replacement work for that, and also removal of hazardous trees and other mitigation work to restore safety in the parks. Happy to take any questions.
Okay. Not seeing any. Next, we have the Information Technology Fund, a transfer associated there, and Mike Sloan from IT is here to brief this.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Ormsby. Good afternoon, City Council. This is a request that was briefed, is to transition what has been a temp seasonal slash project employee into a .5 FTE. This was cleared in 2020, but due to COVID, it was delayed in our work with Local 270 to set this up, so we're asking your approval to transition into a full-time position. The candidate that has been interviewed and selected for the slot is the same candidate that's working in the temp seasonal role. The budget is covered in the Mail Center based on money that we align for the budget for operational for temp seasonal, so we're asking for your approval for this, if you would, please.
Okay. Any questions for Mike? Okay, next, and this item will come up, will reoccur through the meeting. The first deals with the Property Acquisition Fund, and Michelle Hughes, our Director of Accounting, is here to present this item.
Good afternoon, council and council members. This is ordinance 36044, and this is basically an special budget ordinance just to clean up and do some housekeeping due to carry, bonds, or, excuse me, not catching budgets that were set aside in the budget to spend loan proceeds that were to be received with resolution 20210035. What had happened is we had a resolution in the past that allowed three separate SIP loans of 2.5 million, and we had budgeted all of that seven and a half million and were carrying forward unspent budget, so that when the proceeds were received, they could go ahead and spend the proceeds on the loan. And it got missed in the carryover, and so this is just a housekeeping item to add that back into the budget. Is there any questions? Thank you. You're on mute, Mike.
Thank you. Dan Bowler is on the call now, so with the permission of the council, I would skip back to the consent agenda and go to item number nine, which is the award of two bids, and Dan, you're on.
My apologies in the extreme. Item 9A is to propose a low-bid contract for the Highway 902 Transmission Main Relocation with NNAC of Coeur d'Alene for $567,765, to which we propose to set aside a 10% administrative reserve. This project relocates a portion of the 36-inch water transmission main out from under the recently constructed roundabout near Hayford and Highway 902 on the West Plains. The project also extends a 12-inch distribution main west of that roundabout. The low bid from NNAC was $30,000 approximately, or about 6% over the engineer's estimate. Three other bids were received. The 36-inch relocation, the bulk of the project is paid for by WashDOT, and the 12-inch extension is paid for with city funds. Questions on that one? I'll move on to 9B. I don't see any. 9B is proposed low-bid contract with Cycle, for Cycle 8 school safety projects with William Winkler of Newman Lake for approximately $1.477 million, to which we propose to set aside a 10% administrative reserve. This project installs infill sidewalk curb ramps, rapid flushing beacons, 20 mile per hour flashing, wind flashing signs, and other similar elements in various locations throughout the city. The low bid from Winkler was approximately $79,000, or about 5% under the engineer's estimate. Three other bids were received. This project is funded by speed radar ticket money.
Jacobi?
Thanks, Dan. Next, we will move to.
Mike? I just had a quick question.
Yes.
Dan, so is that work going to be done this summer?
Yes, sir. They are nice and early this year.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions? Sorry to jump the gun there a little bit. Next, we'll go to resolutions and final reading ordinances. First is a resolution, as required by municipal code, to install security cameras within City Hall, and Mike Sloan, our IT Director, is here to brief this item.
Dan, thank you, Mr. Ormsby, City Council. This resolution 2021-0034, in compliance with SMCs 180440 and 180460, question your approval installation of a security camera into the doorway that, which we previously called the mailroom center. We're reprovisioning that space, that mailroom, and all the equipment has been moved a couple years ago to the first floor, and we needed a contained area for a lab and for the shipping-receiving of very expensive network equipment. And because of the traffic that can go in and out of that room, we wanted to make sure we had security issues covered, and so that camera is there to track, just like any other door security within City Hall. So asking your approval for the installation of that security camera. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Next, Michelle Hughes is back to brief us on a limited tax general obligation bond to finance capital improvements at the Downriver Golf Course. Michelle.
Thank you, Council President and council members. This is the resolution just to finalize and get approval to actually draw the last $2.5 million draw against the original resolution of 7.5, so that they can complete and do the capital improvement to Downriver Golf Course. Is there any questions? Thank you.
Thanks again, Michelle. And next, we have five proposed or requested modifications to the retail service area, which I think comes up about this time every year, and Eldon Brown is here to brief these five resolutions. Eldon.
Good afternoon, council. We do have five resolutions to amend the retail water service boundary. Over 11 applications total. Seven of them are inside the urban growth boundary, four of them are outside. So we put one resolution for the seven that are inside the UGA boundary, and a separate resolution for each one that's outside the growth boundary. I can either go through them now, if you'd like, or wait till next week's hearing, or I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. So I'm at your mercy, whatever you'd like.
Councilmember Mumm.
Yeah, thank you for all the detail that you put in there, Eldon. I would just like to request, some of these are quite hefty, and I would anticipate there would be a lot of conversation about these, and I just feel like we probably need to, as a group, go through these and have a firm understanding of what it means to extend. So I'm just going to make a motion that we defer this to either a study session or the next PIES meeting, whichever one comes up first, and pull Eldon and Elizabeth Shadell in. This includes the SYSA property on the South Hill that has had a lot of public comment. This includes, again, more northside expansion in, outside of the urban growth area in a rural area. And as you recall, those of you who've been through these hearings, they're long and lots of discussion, and I just think it would be, give us another touch and have an opportunity for all of us to discuss this at length before we bring it forward and hear from the public, so we have all our information together on it. Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to defer to the next available study session or the next PIES meeting, whichever comes first. Any discussion? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, just for clarification, when you say defer to PIES, does that mean we would actually take a vote in PIES, or just discuss this at PIES?
Discuss. We can only take a vote at legislative sessions.
Councilmember Stratton.
Is there any way to get this, when's the next PIES meeting?
Well, we had one today, so it's a month, but.
Oh, so, yeah.
A month and a day.
But if we can get a study session.
Like a study session that might bring it a little, bring it up a little sooner while we're ready to talk about it?
Yeah. We'll see if we can get that. And you were doing this, I'm assuming, on both 36 and 37, which is the.
Keep going. All the retail water service extensions, there's five through 40, so my, to clarify my motion, it's resolution 36 through 40.
Okay.
And I thought that's that.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Burke. Okay. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed name? Any abstentions? All right.
Thank you.
That's deferred to the next PIES meeting or a study session if it can be held sooner. Okay. That shortens your job, Mike.
Okay. And the final proposed ordinance here, again, Michelle Hughes is back, and this ordinance relates to reserve accounts. Michelle.
Good afternoon, council members and council president. This is an ordinance to go ahead and close officially the capital funds that were being underutilized, and we will eventually need an SBO to go ahead and spend these funds. This is just an ordinance to be able to close them and move the money over to the asset management fund for future programming. Again, we'll still have to come forward with an SBO in order to spend these dollars. Is there any questions? Thank you.
Thanks again, Michelle. And then finally, we go to special considerations, and it's the request for a value blanket that was continued or carried forward to this meeting from the April 19 meeting, and Major Mike McNabb is here to further brief and/or respond to any questions that council members may have.
Yeah. Hi, council. So there's been some questions sent through email from council president and council members about this issue, and I don't have the information to your questions yet, and I'm working on it, so I'm asking to either defer this or remove it from the agenda for now until I get that information and bring it back at a later time.
Councilmember Kinnear.
I'm assuming you said me, right?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Thank you, Major McNabb. I would move to defer this. How long would you like it deferred, Major McNabb?
At least a few weeks to look into this thoroughly. I wanted to check on some existing inventory to ensure that this is actually necessary, or if we can make it through the rest of the year with what we have on the value blanket. And also, there was some questions about destruction and some other things internally I want to look into.
So would four weeks be too much? Three weeks?
Do you want to defer it till the next public safety, and we can talk about it then?
Perfect. Well, the next public safety is the third, so how, of May. So how, of May, let's, do you want to defer it to the first Monday of June?
Sure.
Okay. I move to defer to the first Monday in June.
Okay. That's June 7. Yep. Okay. All right. Councilmember Mum?
Yeah, if Michelle is still on, I was thinking, you know, this was funds... Thank you for finding these funds, by the way, Michelle. These funds were going to asset management. And I just, it wasn't something that was, we expected in our budget. And I had worked with folks in Parks to see if we could possibly use that...
Councilmember Mum?
To get some underground equipment. And I think Tanya Wallace is working on that. And I just wanted to see, Michelle, we kind of see you dropped out there, but was there any discussion about why this needed to go into asset management itself? Or could it possibly be used somewhere else?
Councilmember Mum, we're talking about the...
Councilmember Mum? We'll get to your question. But we did have a motion on the floor, just for a moment, to defer to June 7.
Oh, I apologize.
Sorry. Any further discussion on the motion to defer Special Item 1? Okay. Hearing done. All those in favor of deferring to June 7 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed name? Abstentions? Okay, that's deferred. Okay. Now, back to your question. Councilmember Mum?
No worries. Sorry. So we're, we propose to move it to the asset management fund, originally because the funding, there used to be about $500,000 a year for funding that went into the asset management fund for miscellaneous repairs around City Hall, just small items. That funding was cut last year, and so there was nothing in the budget this year. Again, asset management handles all the facilities and stuff. Just because we're closing the funds and moving it there doesn't mean it can't be spent on what you're wanting it to be spent on. I know Tanya is trying to work with Parks to find what, find other alternatives for this equipment. So I'm not saying that, no, eventually it won't be spent on what you're asking. I just wanted to move forward with closing out those funds. It'll be just sitting in asset management's fund balance. And we will still have to come forward with an SBO in order to spend those dollars. They'll just sit there.
Okay. I just wanted to call that, because I've been having conversations and wanted everybody else to know what we were talking about. So appreciate that, Michelle. And good job, again, finding that money.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us...
I think Council President, I think Council President and Council members, there are no other proposed items on the agenda for next week. So that would complete the advanced briefing for the May 3 council meeting.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the advanced agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second?
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the advanced agenda as amended. Any discussion? Hearing is seeing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed name? Any abstentions? Advanced agenda is approved. And that brings us to tonight's agenda. I had one request from Fleet Management to defer Item 2 on the consent agenda, which are some leases for electric vehicles. They need to get a little more information from Enterprise. I'm looking for a motion to defer that for two weeks.
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed name? Any abstentions? All right. Item 2 is deferred for two weeks. If there are any other requests for amending anything tonight? All right. Then let us have Madam Clerk read the consent agenda.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, purchase from RCW Group Tacoma, Washington for two six-wheel flush trucks using Washington State Contract Number 01513. $562,011.48, including tax. Item number two is deferred to May 10, 2021 agenda. Number three, one-year value blanket renewal with transport equipment for the as-needed purchase of air brakes, $100,000. Number four, contract renewal, number one of four, with United States Electric Corporation Olympia, Washington, for high-voltage electrical, technical, and maintenance support services at the waste energy facility from May 1, 2021, through April 30, 2022, not to exceed $90,000, including tax. Number five, Second Amendment to lease agreement with Ula Palakua Ranch Incorporated, Richland, Washington, for the Spokane Envision Demonstration Site at 130 South Arthur Street from December 1, 2020, through May 31, 2021. $97,921. Relates to special budget ordinance, C36041, which we considered this evening. Item number six, authorized subawards of emergency rental assistance funds to A, Carl Maxi Center, $385,000; B, Family Promise of Spokane, $2,199,980; C, Geoko Incorporated Doing Business as Live Stories, $4,041,300. Number seven, subgrant of the Kaiser Permanente National Benefit Foundation Funds to Family Promises Spokane to Support Families Overflow Hotel and Project, required to meet COVID-19 safety protocols, $80,000. Number eight, agreement amendment with ECOVIA Solutions, Salt Lake City, Utah, for the Community Management Information System subscription as a service agreement due to increasing license and storage costs, $58,592. Total agreement amount, $261,245. Number nine, continuum of care grantee agreement amendments for the redistribution of funds from two underspending projects as approved by the Spokane City-County Continuum of Care Board as follows. A, Volunteers of America of Eastern Washington and Northern Idaho for One Hope House Program, $56,590; Two Permanent Supporting Housing Program, $218,641; Three Off-Site Permanent Supportive Housing, $301,326; Four Samaritan, $3, $105,497. Number five, Hope House, 2.0 Permanent Supportive Housing Program, $251,948. B, Catholic Charities of Spokane, for One St. Margaret Shelter Transitional Housing Program, Number two, from Rapid Rehousing for Families Program, $319,543 is the reduction. Number three, from Homeless Families Coordinated Assessment, $169,770 reduction. Number 10, reported the mayor pending A, claims and payments of previously proved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through April 16, 2021. Total $6,66,948.97 with Parks and Library claims approved by the respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $4,228,561.45. B, payroll claims of previously proved obligations through April 17, 2021. Number 11, City Council Meeting Minutes for April 12 and April 15, 2021.
And just to clarify, those continuum of care at Item 9, that's not new money being spent. That's just rebalancing the allocations between various providers. All those in favor of the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed name? Any abstentions? All right. The consent agenda is approved. I also, I asked Dave Steele to be here just briefly to talk about one of the special budget ordinances as far as rent at the Envision Center. I think we talked about it a little bit last week, but I just wanted to make it clear, Dave, if you could explain that we're not actually spending city money on this because we're going to be reimbursed. So we're fronting the money for it, but we're going to be reimbursed. If you could just clarify that for us.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. We're signing the lease, but they, the Envision Center actually has the dollars, but we need to create a landing spot for it. So this is a complete pass-through. You know, there's no city dollars going into this lease. There's some ancillary utility bills that we may pick up, but they're very minimal, so.
Okay. All right. Does anyone have any question? Does anyone have any questions for Dave, so he doesn't have to come back tonight? Okay. Thank you, David. All right. Now, we do have an executive session that we're going to go into to discuss labor negotiations. Mr. Ormsby, how much time do you expect?
I think Council President, it should be no more than 15 minutes.
Okay. Then let's go into executive session until 4:30 by my clock, which is currently 4:09, just to be safe. And so council members, you can go ahead. I believe Jacobi's sent you a link to join us. Those of you in the public, we don't anticipate any further action at the briefing session. We'll come back out at 4:30 and announce the end of the meeting or an extension if needed. All right. We'll see those of you on council in just a few minutes.